I'd like to call this April 2nd meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler? Here. Let the record show that all the members of the board are present at tonight's meeting along with our school board clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, and our division superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett. In addition, we have with us our student liaison, Ms. Jeray Bolton, and I'm going to turn things over to her to make some introductions for us.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Joshua Cunnison, a second grade student at Phillips Elementary.
Can we have everybody to stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the early public for which stands one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. My name is Joshua Cunnison. Every morning Ms. Reynolds starts his day with a few words of wisdom. I would like to share some wisdom with you. Have you ever said, "Hey, you did that on purpose because someone did something unkind"? Doing something on purpose doesn't always mean doing something bad. You can do a good and wonderful things on purpose. Two, you can do a good deed on purpose. You can plan it to be astronaut or a teacher on purpose. Someone wise once said, "First say yourself, say to yourself, what would I be? And then do what you have to do on purpose." So ask yourself this: What kind of person will I be? Will I be responsible on purpose? Will I be helpful? Will I plan to do a good in the world? And then do this: If you catch someone doing a good deed, say to him or her, "Hey, you did that on purpose," because that way we can remember doing something on purpose can be a very good thing. With something to think about, this is Joshua, Joshua Cunnison. To make it a great day or not, the choice is yours.
Great job, Joshua, and thank you for reminding us that we all can do some good things on purpose. So we'd like to take some time to get to know you a little bit better. Do you have a favorite subject in school?
It would be math.
It would? Wow! Not a lot of people like math. That's a good talent. And do you play any sports?
Soccer, basketball, and baseball.
So you're really busy. Out of the three, which one do you think you like the most?
Soccer.
Cool. Would you like to invite, I'm sorry, would you like to introduce the family and support that you have with you this evening?
My mom.
Hi.
My dad. Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Sutton. And Ms. Crowe.
Well, we thank you again for coming to share with us. We truly enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua, for being with us tonight, and thank you for presenting our invocation. You did a very nice job. How are things going over there at Tucker Caps?
Phillips.
Phillips? Oh, I'm sorry, at Phillips.
Good.
Why am I reading Tucker? I'm reading too many things on my screen. So you like it at Phillips?
Yes.
Good. All right. Well, keep us posted how things are going over there, all right? We look forward to hearing back from you another time.
Sure.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good night. I'm sure he was completely perplexed.
Ms. Mugler, I did also happen to learn a little something else about Joshua. He likes to sing and dance, and I believe he was in the talent show at Phillips. Is that right, Joshua?
He won it last year.
And he won it.
Oh, very good. All right, at this time, we're going to move on to recognitions. I'm going to turn things...
Nope, you skipped one.
Sorry, I am reading way too many things on my screen tonight, and thank goodness I have some left-wing and right-wing assistants up here. We're going to hear a performance tonight from our fifth grade honors chorus. So at this time, I see them over to the right. I think we're going to hear a little something from them. Now, the, are you done? I didn't want to stop the music. These students are from Carey and Tucker Caps Elementary Schools. That's why I had Tucker Caps on the brain. And their music teachers are Ms. Jennifer Flowers and Ms. Julie Case-Bolt. And showcased in the center of our stage are members of the fifth grade elementary honors chorus. They were selected as the top musicians in their schools, and these students, along with 204 others, will perform their honors chorus and recorder concert on Saturday, April 26th, at Hampton High School. And that concert will begin at 1 o'clock. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight and giving us a little taste.
Good job.
Thank you.
I didn't know you could sing, man. Play basketball.
And while the students are exiting, I will call on our executive director of marketing and public relations, Ms. Diana Galata, who will be taking care of some recognitions for us tonight, and she'll be assisted by board member, Mrs. Phyllis Henry.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize this month's Dove Award winner. The Dove Award, which stands for dedication of valuable employees, is given to an employee who regularly provides exceptional customer service to our students, staff, and patrons. Our winner tonight is one of my favorite people, Warren James, Lead Security Officer. Come on up. And let me tell you a little bit about what Warren did. He was nominated by Angie Hohn, a parent of a Kiketan High School student, and this is what she said in her nomination: "Please accept my sincerest appreciation and recognition of Officer Warren James. This morning, my daughter's car broke down on her way to school, and I received a call of distress from her. Officer James happened to see her and that she was experiencing trouble. Not only did he notice her situation, he assessed that she needed protection until parental help arrived. He calmed her and let her know that all would be well, and he kept a watchful eye upon her. As I drove up behind her car with its flashing lights, he pulled in behind me and afforded us both traffic security, and he gave us his care and kindness at that time. I have to say that he definitely has been God's emissary to my family on this day, and I'm deeply appreciative of every second of the time we have been afforded by him."
Mr. James is known for that kind of action all the time. He's been looking out for kids since we snagged him somehow to come work for Hampton City Schools, 1995. A mere child. Okay, the Dove Award presented to Warren Jones Student Services for outstanding customer service in Hampton City Schools, which is happily for us, in his case, on everyday basis. And this is dedicating, this is honoring the dedication of our valuable employees, and you're certainly one. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Good evening. My students know how I work. Students, raise your hands in the back. Come on, Phoebus, Bethel, Hampton, hi, all y'all. Thank you very much. Real quick, I need to thank God for changing me. I've been in that boat before. More than ever than less, I must thank this woman sitting before me who's been putting up for me since Bethel High School since I graduated, which is my wife. We've been together 34 years, y'all. So I accept this, but she really deserves it because my phone rings 24/7, and that woman never complains of anything. She pushes me forward. Want to thank my family, my grandchildren, my daughters, my son Chris, my brother and my sister-in-law Vicky. I thank all y'all. And Hampton City Schools, I thank you.
We need the James Fan Club to stand up and congratulate you. Ms. Angie Hooen is here and who nominated you. You go give her a hug. That's good.
Angie, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name.
Oh, we got all the family there. Okay. All the rescuees are here.
Congratulations again. We are also pleased to recognize two students from Bethel High School who won first place in the Community Emergency Response Team category at the 34th Annual HOSA State Leadership Conference. The students are Royalty Bryant and, I'm going to do my best on this one, Adiza Ezechukwu. Please come forward. Are they here? Okay, good. Virginia HOSA is a student organization with both high school and collegiate members. Their mission is to provide opportunities for knowledge, skill, and leadership development for students wishing to pursue a healthcare career.
So this is a new one. We're used to DECA and TSA, and HOSA is a new place to compete, and you went and competed, didn't you? First place. Okay. Hampton City School Board congratulates Royalty Bryant, Bethel High School, first place in Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, at the 94th Annual HOSA State Leadership Conference. Royalty? Okay. Adiza? Again, Hampton City School Board congratulates. Adiza Edjaku-Chuku? Close, huh? You give a people an education every day. You know, you help their tongue learn new things. Thank you so much for bringing recognition to Bethel High School and all your teachers there, and this is signed by Martha Mugler and Linda Shiflett, our superintendent. Thank you, ladies. We're proud of you. Bethel High School, I know, is represented here. The parents want to stand and be recognized too, please? There we go. Mr. Saunders? Stand up and wave. I know he's proud papa of all these kids.
This school year, the Bethel High School and Hampton High School band have each been named a Virginia, Virginia, excuse me, honor band. This is a result of each band earning a superior rating at the state marching band and concert band assessments. This recognition indicates a comprehensive instrumental music performance program at each school. This is one of the highest ensemble achievements a band can earn in our state. Some applause there. So first, we're going to ask the band directors to come forward. The band director at Bethel High School is Mr. Jerry Lancaster. And the band director at Hampton High School is Mr. Justin Ratcliffe. And if you'd stay up here, we're going to call the students up. Obviously, we don't have the whole band here, but we do have some...
Representative sample.
Yes, some student leaders. From Hampton High, Azaya Ruffin, who is an IB senior drum major, has been accepted to multiple colleges and plays the trumpet. And Megan Freeman, also an international baccalaureate junior trombone player, all-district player, low brass section leader, and she would like to attend UVA. And representing Bethel High School, Ryan Rogers, senior tenor sax drum major, band scholarship offered to Elizabeth City State University. Are you here, Ryan? And Dostejaya Moody, senior clarinet woodwind captain, band scholarship offered to Elizabeth City State University.
Well, you know, there's that old adage, "If you want something done, give it to a busy person," and there are no busier people than band students because they're in everything, but they spend hours and hours and hours, and they get to know each other, and they learn more than music from being in band. And we certainly thank you, gentlemen, for teaching them about excellence as well as about music. It shows in everything they do, obviously. Thank you very much.
And our final recognitions tonight are all student athletes, so I would like to introduce Beth Mayer, Coordinator of Athletics and Driver's Education.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll begin by recognizing all the wonderful accomplishments of Phoebus High School girls and boys indoor track teams. The teams are coached by Brian Roundtree and Vernita Brown. They are not here with us, but we have some other coaches that are here with us: Venisha Bunch, Calvin Bunch, Ms. Aduma, and Coach Davis. If I could get the players and the coaches to come on up, that'd be great. The first recognition will be for the Phoebus High School Boys Indoor Track Team. This year, they finished as the conference 18 champion. Congratulations.
We're going to have to give Mr. Roundtree a hard time for not being here with you. You all came. Looking good. I found a thing in my desk that said phantom pride. I was real tempted to wear it tonight. I should have, but you know it's there. So, Boys Indoor Track Team, front and center here so we can see you. And they can get in the back first afterwards. All right. It's hard to be a track member. Not everybody comes out to cheer you, and you work all day long at those track meets, plus all the afternoons that you've worked. Mr. Roundtree doesn't play, does he? He makes you work all the time. All these coaches do. They actually know what you're supposed to do, too, because they make you do it right. Good job. Congratulations, Boys Indoor Track Team, conference 18 champions. Good job. You want to say something about these gentlemen?
Well, what I can say is that they work really hard. They're really trying to excel in academics as well as on the track, and they just put it all out there this year, and they went for it.
Next, we would like to recognize the Girls Indoor Track Team. They were the 4A South Region Champion. Ladies, step on up.
All right, ladies. Hampton City School Board congratulates Girls Indoor Track Team, Coach Vernita Brown, 4A South Region Champions. We got used to all these new, you had to compete against people you'd never seen before, huh? Still beat them. Good job. Congratulations. Ms. Brown?
All right. The rest of the recognitions are either individual or team accomplishments from the group that we have in front of us. So our school board member, Mrs. Henry, will read the certificates with the names and accomplishments, and if you would come forward when your name is called.
Ashante Jackson. School Board congratulates Ashante, conference 18 champion in the 1,000 meter and the 1,600... Yeah, that's right. I read the number right. 1,600 meter. Good job. Thank you, ma'am. Oh my, I have a whole lot to read here. Hampton City School Board congratulates Carolyn Brown. Okay, she won it all. Come on here. Conference 18 championship champion in the 55-meter hurdles, the 55-meter high jump and long, the 55-meter high jump and long jump. Okay. This is what it says here, Ms. Mayer. I'm sorry. It didn't sound right. The 4A South Region Champion in the 300 meters, the 55 meters, the 55-meter hurdles, and the high jump. Then she is the 4A Virginia VHSL State Champion in the 55 meters, the 55-meter hurdles, and the high jump. Congratulations to her. Okay. Dartrez Thompson. Come here, dear. Champ, conference 18 champion in the 500 meters and the high jump. Congratulations. Charles Graham. Okay. Hampton City School Board congratulates Charles Graham, conference 18 champion in the 55-meter hurdles, 4A South Region Champion in the 55-meter hurdles, and 4A Virginia High School League State Champion in the 55-meter hurdles. Okay, now we got four at a time. Four-by-two-hundred Boys Relay Team. Okay, they kind of did a lot, too, because they are the conference 18 champions, they are the 4A South Region Champions, and they are the 4A Virginia High School League State Champions, and this is Jeremiah Drury, Jamari Becknell, Darius Jones, Charles Graham, Dartrez Thompson, and Ronell Thompson, and that's because they weren't always the same four. They only ran four of them at once. Thanks, gentlemen. Congratulations. Okay, four-by-eight-hundred Boys Relay Team. Same guys? No, different guys? All righty. Hampton City School Board congratulates the four Phoebus High School, all these guys are phantoms. We knew that, right? They're phantoms. The conference 18 champions, Devon Tonkins, Michael Wild, Javon McKinney, Sean Winbush, and Jaquiel Kirkland. Again, there are more than four of them, but they competed differently. Congratulations. Last one. Last but not least, okay, we have the four-by-four-hundred Girls Relay Team. If you don't remember who you are, Amira Aduma, Katia Pierce, Twanika Washington, and Ashante Jackson, and they are the 4A South Region Champions. And for competing in a new region, I think you competed, ladies. Good job.
If we could get the parents and the administrators to stand up, please, of these great Phoebus phantoms. Ms. Brown?
Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Good job.
This concludes our student recognitions tonight. So, congratulations again to all of our student athletes, to our Dove Award winner, Warren James, and our students who competed in the CERT team competition. Congratulations again to all of you. Without objection, we'll take a brief five-minute recess and resume with public comment. Okay, we will resume this evening's meeting with the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions regarding the superintendent's proposed FY 2014-15 school operating budget. Ms. Bowers, would you please present the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowers. We'll start off with our first speaker tonight, Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, members of the school board, Dr. Shiflett. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road in Hampton. Tonight, I'd like to speak on two matters. First of all, personnel issues. Per your policy and your-- On specific issues, I'll make this general. How does this board decide to fire teachers? What consideration is given to service of the teacher's service and their effectiveness? I say it's the taxpayer money being affected, and we should know why. Why do clear policy decisions seem to have a racial basis? Why do black school board members vote in favor of black teachers whereas white school board members vote to fire black teachers? Decisions about hiring and firing should be made public for this very reason. How is the public informed of school board decisions? How do school division personnel learn from those actions taken? Hampton School Board policy is based on Virginia Code. Hampton Schools-- Hampton City Schools Policy Manual, Section JG, covers this. But nowhere do I see where an explanation for the actions taken are prohibited or is prohibited. In the same way, the Code of Virginia establishes foundation for personnel actions. Virginia Code, Section 22.1 and 63.2 are pertinent in this matter. And again, nowhere do I see where an explanation for actions taken is prohibited. I think it's time for this school board to be transparent. Explain to Hampton residents why you take action against teachers and tell other Hampton City Schools employees that they will be held to the same standards. Next, I'd like to cover city-- Sorry, school system accounting. The bookkeeping in this school system still is unacceptable. This isn't simply about funding, but it's about tracking the number of students and employees. I've corresponded with Dr. Shiflett, and I thank you for that, Dr. Shiflett. The official documents have been submitted under your signature to the Virginia Department of Education. However, I still find your explanation to-- With-- As to the inconsistent documentation to be unsatisfactory from a Hampton resident perspective.
Mr. Dietrich, I'll caution you from directing your comments toward any employee of this division. Do not do that.
All right, Mrs. Mugler. Here is an example of poor accounting. Total number of students reported for 2012 to 2013 varied by 914 over a seven-month period. The total number of teachers reported for 2012 to 2013 varied by 384. These numbers were officially reported four to 11 months after last school year. How can anyone have any confidence in this administration? Does this school board even look at administration reporting? Why should we believe the budget numbers submitted by this administration? Do we really have a $7 million budget shortfall? How can we know there's a budget shortfall without justification? I think it's time for the school board to do its job. Where's the oversight from the Hampton School Board? What else is being improperly reported? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Our next speaker will be Ruth Wheeler. And I'll ask the audience to please refrain from jeering and cheering and so forth in the interest of time to allow each speaker an opportunity to speak and be heard.
Good evening. Well, I'm back. And I just wanna have y'all listen to me again. There's a lot of things that we still, as custodians, do not understand. We have not been given very little information. We picking most of ours up through the daily press, which is wrong. I mean, we had one meeting, still only one meeting. And the DLT team, I know they are the ones that are sitting on the-- You know, making the decisions of what may need to go. And I'm sure there's some things need to go. But we need to look at-- This company is saying at the end of 90 days, there's gonna be changes. Okay, at the end of 90 days, who's gonna change? Who's gonna go? There's 214. If they decide they only keep 100, what happens to the other 114? Where do we go? Do we go anywhere? And if they get rid of us, is anybody gonna be responsible for unemployment? Is it the Hampton City Schools? Is it the GCS team? Who is it? Or are we not gonna be eligible for unemployment at all? Also, we've been told that we can only collect $30 for any sick leave accumulated. That's Hampton Schools' policy. Is that Hampton City School policy straight across the board? If you have a doctor's degree, a master's degree, you're gonna make the same as someone who may not have an education at all? Okay, Ms. Henry, I believe you. I see you shaking your head. I believe you. But, you know, it's so many concerns. I mean, it's like, y'all put us on a boat, you've pulled the plug, and we have nothing else to do but drown. I would appreciate it if people would just come to us and say, "This is what is going to happen. This is what we need to happen." We should've had a meeting of whomever was gonna meet with us, whether it be the DLT team, whether it just be one person, whether it be two people. I don't care how many it was. We should've met by ourselves with them-- With the Hampton City Schools before they bought in a company that still has answered no questions. We don't know what we're gonna make. We don't know who's gonna make the decision of who stays, who goes. Nobody is letting us know nothing. We're finding out more information from the daily press, which is really sad. And we do so much more. I mean, you know, we are having to date the fire extinguishers. Who's gonna do that? That's not cleaning. Who is go-- I mean, there is so much y'all need to consider. I've painted this whole school. Who's gonna take care of my walls that I have spent endless hours painting? That's not cleaning. We need some information, and we need it now. We needed it yesterday. We needed it a month ago. We have not gotten anything. We don't know who they're gonna keep, who they're not gonna keep. What if we don't want them after 90 days? Do we have that decision? Can we say, "We don't want y'all"? No, but they can say, "We don't want you." And I think it's being unfair. I think we were treated as 214 custodians. We were treated unfairly. Because no one wants to give us the time. Now, I know that y'all are busy. Everybody's busy. We're busy, too. We come in here, and we look like a hot mess because we've either left our job to come here and speak, or we've either just left work and went home and had to feed some children so we could come back and speak. So, we don't have time for pantyhose and heels. But we need some answers, and we need them now, before our jobs extinguished and we don't have 90 days. I wanna know how much I'm gonna make, who's gonna pay me, and why am I gonna have to be a floater? I've been in this school for 12 years. Why do I need to float anywheres? The company said, when he spoke to us-- He was at the last meeting that I was speaking. He said, "We could go to Norfolk." If on $9 an hour, really? You can't even catch the bus to Norfolk. Somebody needs to do something. I wanna hear from somebody. The last time, they keep saying, "Oh, you're gonna hear something." When? When we're fired? When we no longer have our job, we're gonna hear something. "Oh, we no longer want you. You didn't clean that toilet quite right, so you're done." Or, "You didn't wipe that wall right," or "You forgot to mark that fire extinguisher." Somebody's gotta step up and tell us something. We have nothing, nothing to go on, nothing. One meeting is not enough for 214 custodians. And some of them aren't speaking because they say, "Why speak? It's a done deal. Y'all gonna do what you're gonna do." So, why do they wanna waste their time from their families to come here and speak? But I'd like to have some information, and I'd like to know what I'm gonna make, and I'd like to know what's gonna happen to me if they don't like my job or what I perform. And I wanna know what's gonna happen to the other 114 if they only keep 100 of us. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Jason Samuels.
Good evening, board members, Madam Chair Mugler, Dr. Shiflett, Division Leadership Team, those in attendance, and those in the TV land. My name is Jason Samuels, and I reside at 312 Congress Avenue, and I am a candidate for Hampton School Board. Likely, the greatest responsibility of an elected body is the stewardship of the public purse. Ultimately, the decisions you make today must support our collective desire for school safety, teachers' salary, student retention and success, protecting essential and core services, and perhaps, the top of the list, job safety and security. The school division has achieved gains, but we should always be moving forward, seeking the best options and opportunities for our children and our staff. We must always be in the mode of insisting on continuous growth and to start to think and look outside of the box. All taxpayers are looking to the school board to be as efficient as possible, and this is a mandate that is charged to you. The budgeting process is more than simple assigning dollars to fund projects and programs or cutting critical services. The financial priorities define not only our current quality of life, but perhaps more importantly, the long-term vision of this community. We are a community with assets, but we need someone with the vigor and the vision to tackle the challenges and opportunities so that we can continue to prosper well in the 21st century. I must once again quote Will Rogers when he said, "Even if you are on the right track, if you just sit there, you are gonna get run over." Therefore, let us seek out new funding opportunities and move the school division forward, because every child matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Our next speaker is Yvonne Correll. Do I have that right? Is it Correll or Correll? Yvonne? Correll.
Hello, guys.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Yvonne Correll, and I'm a custodian for Smith Elementary. I've spoken to you guys before. And I'm just here because I have some concerns about the outsourcing as I expressed in previous meetings. I just wanna reiterate that by outsourcing the custodians, it's not just affecting your budget. It's affecting our lives. It's affecting HVAC. It's affecting our custodians, and it's also affecting our students. If the majority of this-- If the majority of the custodians are going to not get approved to go to a brand-new company, or they just simply retire because they're too old, or if they-- Or they just don't wanna go to the company because of the pay cut. We're going to Obamacare. And also, it's like, it's not just gonna affect that. It's just gonna affect everything. And I know that a lot of people keep coming up to me, and they're telling me, "Why should I even go to the school board meeting? It's not gonna make any difference. Everything's the same." I like what I do, and I'm proud to be a custodian, and I do my job every day. I even finish early so I could come and speak to you guys because it is important for you guys to understand and more or less hear what we are going through. At that meeting, they-- I've asked a lot of questions, and I still don't know. I find out my information in a newspaper or through hearsay. So, it is-- I'm just, you know-- It's pretty sad that we're getting the information from somebody else instead of Hampton City Schools. You know, it'd be nice if Hampton City Schools will-- Would speak to the custodians and tell us everything that we need to know. I make $10 an hour. If I go to the GCA, I'm gonna make $8 an hour. I barely could support myself off of 10. I cannot be-- Afford to be $8 an hour. And I do the work of me being paid $15 to $20 an hour because I do more than clean. I make sure the kids are safe. I make sure that everything is in order for the next day. And I go beyond all my custodians and my HVAC. If something is wrong, they'll come and they'll correct it. I don't think GCA will even go up and beyond. On their website, they're like, "We go up and beyond." No, 'cause if you did-- Because if they did, they would tell us straightforward that day, and they didn't. And I just don't know why we're even doing this. And if I can have all my custodians that are here today and my HVAC stand up, please. All these people that are standing up, their lives are gonna be affected. Their pay cut is gonna be affected. And not just, but their lives, their husbands, their wives, their kids, and their self-esteem. Somebody passed away because they were so stressed out because of the-- Of this cut. This is ridiculous. And I don't even know how to-- I don't even know how to express any more concern and more frustration for my fellow employees. I mean, my fellow coworkers, because we are the best. And no matter what company you go to, no matter if GCA does come through and take us away, we, Hampton City School-- we Hampton City School employees are the best. And you won't get that in your schools. And, you know, since the first and the last meeting that we had, that is the only information that we had. And really, that isn't enough. Because they didn't give us any email. They didn't give us no information, no paper saying, "This is A, B, C, and D." No, they're like, "You asked too many questions. I'm not gonna let you speak anymore. My time is running out." But thank you for listening to me. Thank you for, guys, standing up and being here.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Henderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a very proud parent at Paul Burbank Elementary School, and I would like to speak to you about the PYP and NYPD program budget item. The IB program is an integral part of the total educational experience of all Burbank Elementary students. This program is fundamental, and it enhances the educational development, the academic experience, the personal growth, personal development, and the transferability of many of our students, especially if they leave Hampton City Schools. This program better prepares Burbank students for that next academic step, especially if that is to a middle school or high school with an IB program. Each student creates an IB profile that then follows them through the rest of their, through fifth grade, and then continues with them to an IB middle and an IB high school that then makes them better prepared for college. As I'm sure many of you are aware, the IB program makes any diplomed high school student far more prepared and far more available to do certainly better in college and get them into college at a much better rate than most of those who do not go through an IB program. And certainly, if you have that start at the elementary level, go to the middle school level, and then to the high school level. Not only will your students be better prepared when they graduate, but they will have started that process at a much earlier age. And you will find them to be better students as they go all the way through. More than thirty-five percent of all students at Burbank are active-duty military or Reserve members, are families that transfer frequently in and out of the area. The fact that Burbank is an IB school is the many, most of them. That is the reason why they chose Hampton City Schools over going to something like York County Schools, because you have that program. I believe personally, and have seen great strides in the new integrated program that Burbank has been working on the last few years. I've also seen excellent improvement with the staff of Hampton City Schools to better streamline the IB program between all the other, the elementary, middle, and high schools. I've seen great work being done to integrate that continuum. And to lose that momentum would truly be horrific. The distinctiveness of the IB World Program within Hampton City Schools is far too important to the city of Hampton and to our students. Paul Burbank Elementary is not only the only IB elementary school in Hampton, but is also the very first one to be in the Commonwealth of Virginia. That is quite a distinctive. Hampton City Schools is also the one and only in our entire region who has the IB continuum to start at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school level. That is a distinctive that no one else in our region has, sets us above the rest. And in general, especially for those coming in with military backgrounds, are a reason they will choose Hampton City Schools over any of your surrounding cities. So I ask you very fervently to continue funding the PYP and NYPD programs here in Hampton City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Our next speaker is Galene Conoyten York.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak about, speak on behalf and in support of keeping the custodians. You know, they are the first thing, the first people that open the doors in the morning to make sure that the schools are clean, set the tone for behavior when you come into the schools. And I see how the schools look at the end of the day with the students being there. I've talked to many of the custodians in the past, and I know the pride that they have in our schools. It almost feels like the least of these is being sold into slavery. That's what it feels like. You know, it's also, you know, on February the thirteenth, the Daily Press reported that at one of the School Board meetings, it was proposed that the substitute teachers would be outsourced. And then someone sent me some information that said a RFP was launched on October of 2013, and it was awarded in December of 2013. But yet, in February, it was said that it was proposed of 2014. And that's kinda, that is, concerns me a lot. And so now, I'm wondering, has the outsourcing for custodians been awarded? The company has been awarded already? Has the communication, since the communication is not there with the custodians? It's not clear, and I'm really concerned about that as well. You know, every year, the budget process takes, I mean, goes on at the same time. We know that the General Assembly and funding from the federal government has been declining for years. Ann Bane does an excellent job going to Richmond and Washington DC working on behalf of Hampton City Schools. She knows the legislators very well, and they know her. However, it's always declining, but she's doing the best that she can do. So we have to start looking outside of the box. I've sent many ideas from other cities. We need to connect with our businesses. Our businesses wanna help Hampton City Schools. We don't do any events, anything to connect with our businesses where they can help us with some of our programs that we have. We're, I mean, we're suffering, and it's gonna be declining. So we have to look at other avenues, to the point where, I know the staff has even shrunk on trying to help to find these resources. But we have people out here that's willing to volunteer to help. I'm willing to help with that. And lastly, you know, we have bullying in our schools. And I'm not gonna leave today without saying that I was very, very disheartened to find out that we had two School Board members that bullied our student liaison in September of last year. And I know that she made her peace, and she said what she, she said what she had to say, and she wants to, you know, let it rest right now. But I do want you to know that the community knows, and we are standing behind you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Tanya Hutchinson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Shiflett and members of the School Board. I am Tanya Hutchinson, President of the Hampton Education Association. I find myself standing in front of you once again, as I have been for the past two years. This time, I stand with a different mindset. I'm not asking for more money and more time. When you make your final decision regarding this 2014-2015 budget, please consider the instructional assistant that has worked for the school system for twenty-plus years because they love the kids and they love what they do. But they are now being told, "Thank you for the years, but you will be reduced to twenty-five hours a week and will no longer receive benefits." These benefits have helped many employees with cancer, lupus, heart disease, and other chronic diseases obtain the medical attention needed in order for them to survive. Additionally, please consider the custodian that has supported his or her family on their income for ten-plus years, and they are now being outsourced. Finally, the teachers that have relied on their stipends to make ends meet. So tonight, I ask you to not sit there defeated, but to join us. Please join us in the fight for public education. Some of you have been with Hampton City Schools for thirty-five-plus years, and no one who invests that much time into a worthy cause should witness its demise. We need to hold politicians at the national and state level accountable in supporting educational funding. If you have never taught before, then you can't say twenty-five to thirty students in a classroom is a suitable environment conducive for learning. Working with special-needs children is extremely challenging. Therefore, we should not place quotas on the number of instructional assistants. If we prepare from the beginning, we are not spending years trying to repair. Some of us have children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews that are the products of Hampton City Schools. When we make these decisions concerning cuts, it not only affects the employees, but it affects our future. Now is the time to not only say, "Every child, every day, whatever it takes," but it's time to live it. It's time for a change. It's time for the year-after-year possible rifletters to cease. It's time to invest in our children's education and not divest. In closure, I would like to quote from Benjamin Franklin, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dan McFarland.
Good evening. I'm a music teacher. I'm the Vice President of the HEA. And when I, when I see you guys having to deal with this problem, I see defeat. And that's not, you know, that's not what you need to do. I mean, that look in your eyes like, like you're really at your wits' end is only for old guys like me that can't afford to retire. But I've been sitting here for the last five meetings I've been to. I've heard every story. I've heard about every program that's on the chopping block from people who experience it and know them all better than I do. And the custodian outsourcing, that really seems to be handled very callously. And I need to, I need to go back just to another thought. And it has, that every morning, we have kids who make announcements, and they always have this little moral. And they, this morning, these kids quoted the Little Prince and said, "It is only with the heart that you can see right." Now, that has a lot of meanings, and I'm easily confused. And, but it does mean, right means, can you see the truth? Can you see what's real, what's correct? But it also means, what's the moral priority? And so, if you got out of the numbers and you didn't sit there thinking, "Well, we just don't have any more money. We'll just have to do, cut this, cut that, and we'll do what we're told." And I know with due diligence, the administration has to prepare for the worst. That's true. But you are elected to represent the educational needs of the city. And even everybody in the city, from this city council to the businesses, they all know that everything is gonna hinge on how people perceive the schools. And correctly, again, rightly so, Dr. Shiflett has explained for the last two years and said, "We have cut to the bone, and then we cut again." Now, we wear black and blue because that's what we're going through. The staff, the morale. And these teachers, I've never, I've been around a long time. And we have teachers in every pod at the end of every school day working way past the time that was normally done for the first ten, fifteen years that I worked in this system. And so, you should just ask for what is needed. Let the city council worry about the economy. It's like you, it's like when you go on a business trip, you can fill out the expense report with just enough receipts based on what they allot you. Now, I've done it. Like, "Oh, done, that's an easy one." But then I started putting down the entire expense of my trip to let the people that I turned it into know the truth. And it's only with the heart that you can see what's right. Tell them the truth. That this is the, this is what you need. And actually, what you're asking for, even, even, you know, if we just ask for the budget that we had last year and don't have to make the cuts that we feel we need to make now, we're still running on fumes. We're still gonna have large class sizes. We're still gonna have demoralized teachers that work hard. I mean, they might be demoralized, but they do a great job. And I just think that you have to start thinking of a philosophy that's known as a needs-based budget. Don't ask for what they'll give you. Tell them what you need. Just tell them the truth.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland.
Good evening, Chair Muggler, School Board, Dr. Shiflett. I'm Douglas Manuel. I'm the Manager of Operations for Hampton City Schools. Along with the custodians following my department, there are some more numbers that are not added in to the custodial staff. I have two supervisors, custodial supervisors, whose jobs are gone. Three floor crew that's out working now in the school, and four people at the warehouse, plus myself, to add to that two-hundred-and-fourteen, whose jobs are gone. In my department, when we had meetings, on top of the paper, it said, "Cleaning for Education." We put kids first. It's a known fact, known study. Kids do better in a clean school, in a clean environment. Contract, if you look at the study, I get paperwork every day through my computer with the organizations that we are members of, other organizations on a daily basis. Every place that have gone, contract, outsourced custodians, within five years have gone back to in-house because it did not work. They did not provide the service that they said they would. All the custodians can tell you, my preach to them in all our meetings, do not let your school be on the news because of a virus. You have seen viruses in Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Portsmouth. You have seen two in Newport News in the last twelve years. And those two were MERSA viruses. One at Kikatang and one at Asbury about six years ago. We worked to two o'clock in the morning to disinfect those two schools. There's things that custodians do, things that our staff do, that people don't see, you don't hear. People can attest to it. A few years ago, Dr. Woods can attest to this. When she was principal at Phoebus High School, you had a big program going that was scheduled for Eaton. The electrical room blew up at Eaton. They moved it to Phoebus. On Friday, she said it'd never be ready. What did I tell you, Dr. Woods? Don't worry about it. When you came in Monday morning, what did you say? You could see your face in the floors. You will not get that from the contractor. In the last forty-three years, I have had two jobs. One military and one Hampton City Schools. And I hate to say that I get fired from the one at Hampton City Schools. My department, dollar-wise, on our budget, is efficient. My boss, Tom Sawyer, can attest to that. We do not waste money. I have seen the custodial staff from day one that I got in this position. I came out of maintenance. I was supervised at a plumbing shop. I was hired as a boiler technician in Hampton City Schools. I took on a challenge in 2002. I took on a challenge in 2002, when this department was brought back. My job was get the schools clean, supervise the custodians. And we did that to a extent until I was told, "The principals are now in charge. You support them." But even now, we still get their phone call, even this summer. Doug, we got to get Hampton ready. School opened Tuesday. My whole staff worked the Labor Day weekend for Hampton to open on Tuesday. We have closed down schools. It was my staff, my people, that moved them. Last year for Hampton High for the construction, a moving company wanted $25,000 just to take the furniture from the second floor and put them in pause on the first floor. They wouldn't justify why the cost. How'd I know? Because I dealt with the contract. I put a team together, and with my supervisors, we moved all the furniture with the custodians at Hampton High School. Moved it about 10 times, where the contractors could do their job, but came up Tuesday morning, the second floor was open and ready to go. You got loyalty. And I never seen people that care so much about what they're doing, and they love for the children. Some of these people have been in the system 26 years. They're gone. No retirement, because they are not old enough, and they fall short over the 30 years. We are people. We took the bottom of the stick when the teachers were getting 7% to 8% raises. We were told we would catch all up later. Later never came. I have seen cuts. We have one school right now have two custodians assigned to it. That's Morton Elementary. We have some have two at night. Our middle schools and our high schools have three custodians during the daytime because of cuts. We had to put people where we could use them best because the majority of your cleaning is done at night. We tell the day shift, "You maintain." And we use the football analogy. You win with defense. Night shift, you are defense. Day shift, you are offense. You keep it going to the night shift command. They are there first thing in the morning, when it snows, when you come in, there's no storm on the sidewalk because they have been there to clean. When we open up the shelters, I have people spend 24 hours at the shelters. I'm running back and forth between the shelters. No matter if the wind's out there 80 miles an hour, I'm out there going, they're out there doing their job. A couple of things you need to look at. All of us do not get all the benefits from Hampton City Schools. I do not get medical or dental from Hampton City Schools. I have my own. I'm not the only one between custodians and H bag shop in that same boat. Is that counted as a savings? If it is, it's not a savings. You can't save what you don't spend on, and on them. Look at your numbers again. As far as custodians, yes, we have 214. But all of those do not get benefits. Some of them ask their salary because they're part-time. Some of them are 10 months. Yeah, they get benefits, but they don't get vacation. And the rest of them are 12 months. These people are here because they love the job. They love what they do. They love the kids. They love the kids. In my position, going from school to school, I'm glad that I can walk in, do what I got to do, and walk out with some of these kids. But they are stuck there with. And one thing that's disheartening, when someone goes downtown to put paperwork in to retire, and they are asked, "Oh, you go work for the contractor?" When I see a job posting in the newspaper on the 28th of March that has my job description in it, line by line, in the Daily Press, and the vote's not even taken, that's disheartening. We are not dummies. We are not stupid. We might not be the smartest ones, but some of us, a lot of us do have college education. We can read. We take the thankless jobs that nobody else wants. When you are not looking, we're there.
Mr. Manuel, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. You can wrap up your thoughts, but we're well over the five minutes.
Take a good look at the numbers. You are getting rid of a group that could be hard to replace by a contractor. They do more than what you think and what you know. When you are not there, when no one else is there, they are there. When you're not looking, they're doing something. And the kids, a lot of them, especially elementary school, look up to them because that is the only, a lot of them, only father figure that they have in their life is when they come to that school. Don't get rid of the people that care and put somebody in there that's just on numbers because that's what you get with a contractor, are numbers, because it's driven by what? Bottom line, his profit. That's what you go get. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the list of speakers I have. Madam Clerk, are there any additional?
No, there are not.
Thank you. We'll move on then and begin with our consent agenda tonight. It consists of items 5.01 through 5.08. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We begin now with our superintendent and staff reports, and I will turn things over to Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is about our student-operated tech support center at Kikatane High School. This is a really important connection to the world of work for our young people, and I would like to introduce Mr. John Eagle, our executive director for information technology.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. You know, we sometimes joke that kids are better with technology than adults are sometimes, but we've sort of figured out a way to capitalize on that to create a real win-win for the division as well as students. Students, in this case, are getting real-life, real-world, job-related experience, and of course, we get a win because they're also supplementing our very limited technology support resources. But as you know, I like to be behind-the-scenes person, so I've invited the real stars of this program, Dr. Haynes and Paul Lawrence, the principal and assistant principal, respectively, at Kikatane High School, as well as a few of the students that are participating in this program, to introduce it to you and to talk about it.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, school board members, Dr. Shiflett, and the Hampton community. This evening, we come before you to share our experience of creating the Student-Operated Technical Support Center at Kikatane High School. With me this evening is Mr. Irvin Hall. Mr. Hall manages the support center and has been a part of the planning of this program from its early stages. Also with me is Mr. Paul Lawrence, assistant principal at Kikatane. Mr. Lawrence is going to introduce to you three Kikatane students who have been part of the support center this year.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. Good evening. Now, I'd like to introduce to you three students who have worked on the Student-Operated Technical Support Center this year. We have with us tonight Mr. John Sly, Trevor Reed, and Kyle Squires. At this time, I'm going to turn the program over to John, Trevor, and Kyle so that they can share with you some details about the creation of our support center and the current status of the program. John?
Good evening. I would like to begin by discussing the timeline for the creation of the Student-Operated Technical Support Center at Kikatane. As you can see, Mr. Eagle first approached Dr. Haynes and Mr. Lawrence last February with the concept of having students become more actively involved in the business of maintaining the technology hardware and systems at Kikatane High School. When it was decided that Kikatane would pilot this, sorry, when it was decided that Kikatane would pilot this new class, a planning committee was formed. The planning committee worked to define the concept of the center and schedule the process for creating and implementing the program. The committee also designed the curriculum for the course that Mr. Hall would use to train students to man the support center. The planning committee also met with guidance counselors to ask for their assistance in recruiting students for this class for the next school year. The committee also advertised the program to parents to make them aware of the opportunity and the application process. Our schools are filled with technology. Between the computer labs, laptop carts, printers, and Promethean boards, our students are interacting with a variety of hardware and software throughout their school careers. The concept of the Student-Operated Technical Support Center was born of the idea that our students might gain some value, career experience, some valuable career experience by assisting our building technician in managing and maintaining our equipment. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Kyle Squires, who will tell you about the process for starting this center and our curriculum.
The process for creating the support center began with assigning the program and course number and recruiting and scheduling students. The process on our team was required to complete an application and be interviewed before they were accepted into the class. At first, only seniors were going to be eligible for the class, but that requirement was dropped when several juniors expressed an interest in joining. The planning committee also set up some ground rules for the support center. The students who worked the support center would be introduced to the staff and be provided with identification badges so that they would be recognizable as they worked in the classrooms and labs throughout our building. It was also agreed upon that students would not receive any administration access to the network. The work would consist of maintaining equipment and responding to work orders. The next step in the development of the support center was for the planning committee to create a curriculum. It was decided students enrolled in this course would be taught how to use the technology work order system. This would give them the opportunity to work with our building technician to respond to the variety of issues that could present themselves in our building. To help our team become an effective, responding to these issues, they would learn how to work with and troubleshoot the various hardware in the building, such as desktop computers, laptop carts, printers, Promethean boards, and document cameras. In addition, students would be trained to assist the building tech and the general maintenance that is required over the course of the school year. These jobs include the reimaging of desktop and laptop computers, rewiring labs and laptop carts, replacing toner cartridges, and making minor printer repairs. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Trevor, who will tell you about some of the successes this year.
One thing that we have, one thing that we are very proud of this year is that our support center has contributed to the completion of at least one quarter of the technology work orders submitted by the staff this year. Another thing that we have, see, we have, another thing that we see as a real success is that the great reputation that we have with the faculty and the staff at Kikatane, Mr. Hall and Mr. Caldwell have really taught us something valuable, being courteous and professional as we go about our jobs. At the beginning of the year, some teachers were a little uncomfortable when we would show up to their doors to answer a work order. Now, because of this good reputation, we are seen as responsible members of the school technology team. Part of the work of the building technician is replacing equipment on a regular schedule. This year, we have worked with Mr. Caldwell to keep our desktops, labs, and laptop carts fully operational. One of the most common jobs that we perform is maintenance on the building's 120 Promethean boards. The filters on the LCD projectors need to be cleaned regularly, and when a bulb burns out, the teachers count on us to replace it quickly so that they can use the board for instruction. Each member of our team has been assigned several Kikatane's 14 laptop carts. It is our job to audit these carts at least once a month to do an inventory and check for damages. We have also been responsible for the wiring of three new laptop carts. Every year, our school disposes of older equipment, and it has been our job to erase or wipe the hard drives of all desktop computers and laptop carts that are being disposed in order to protect the privacy of users in our building. As older equipment is removed, newer equipment arrives to take its place. We have spent this time year, spent this time's year updating our desktop labs and laptop carts as well as installing new printers throughout the building. Finally, we have become very familiar with Kikatane's testing calendar. One of our major responsibilities this year has been preparing our labs and laptop carts for testing. This job includes reimaging computers so that they have the newest versions of software and also movement of laptop carts to sites. Teachers and staff have come to count on us to help tests run smoothly. This is a job we take seriously, and now I'm going to turn it back over to Kyle to talk about the plans for support centers for next year.
Our first goal for next year is to increase enrollment in this class. We also hope to expand the support center's hours so that we can be open all day. We would like to have a year-two class available for those juniors who have room in their schedule to be part of our team for another year. One thing that our whole team agrees on is that we can do more to help Kikatane by being more energy-efficient. We would like to work next year to make sure the equipment is powered down after hours and during holiday breaks. Finally, we want to learn new and different things about the technology we use in school. We were always reminded this year that there is always something new to learn when you work in technology. We are excited to continue to grow as technicians and to help the teachers and students of Kikatane High School use technology to its fullest potential. Our team would like to thank Dr. Haynes, Mr. Eagle, Mr. Hall, and Mr. Caldwell for giving us this opportunity. We think that it is a great program that has helped us to learn a lot this year. Now, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Haynes for some closing remarks.
Thank you, John, Kyle, and Trevor, for doing a great job representing the Student-Operated Technology Support Center at Kikatane High School. We are proud of the work that your team has done this year. I would also like to take a moment to ask the family and friends of these young men to stand and be recognized. I know that you are as proud of John, Trevor, and Kyle as we are. I would like to thank you for your support by being here this evening. Our motto at Kikatane High School is "The Home Where Everyday Greatness Is the Expectation." I believe that this support center is exactly the kind of program that allows for our students to gain valuable career experience and model our expectation of greatness. Thank you for your attention. We will be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation tonight. Very nicely done. And just a quick question from me. I usually let everybody else ask the questions first, but I see a photograph here. There are six students in the picture. Is that the whole class? Are there others? How many are enrolled, involved?
That is the class.
Six. That's great.
Yes.
That's great. Well, it sounds like you're doing yeoman's work there. Do you all do house calls? Because I got a little bug in my laptop that...
Bring it on.
It's very impressive, the work that you all doing. It's exciting to see that. Let me see if we have questions from other board members tonight. Mrs. Henry?
This is so exciting. Anytime we can do a real-world application internship for students, we can do this one right here on the spot, and we don't have to ship you off and let your talents be at some other company. We're using you in our company, and that's really good. I must say, you look very professional, and I'm glad that some of you are juniors so you can stay around for the second year. As it grows, do you think you might get to the point? I know at Kikatane, you've been pioneers in a lot of things, and one of them is bring your own device. You think you might be able to set aside some hours for students to come and say, "Help!" Because I'd like to have had help this afternoon with my iPad. But I know that students probably could use some assistance as well as the staff. Staff will keep you busy nonstop, but it might be nice to carve out a little space for students. What do you think, gentlemen? Do people bug you anyway because they know you're the experts?
I know the plan next year is to have almost like a call booth where they can call in, and they can come-
call in and they can come down and we can set up a meeting time to troubleshoot whatever issues they have.
Fantastic.
Also, um, they're doing, what's the name of that initiative? With the iPads? Yeah. The one-to-one initiative. Also, we would be there so that when, if they have issues with their iPads, they could come by and we could troubleshoot them and fix them without using the IT services.
Very good.
The actual tech.
Well, you've learned a lot of independence and self-reliance along with this technology and we're very proud of this situation. It's very good. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members? Mr. Harper?
Guys, uh, Mr. Dr. Hayes, congratulations. The program obviously works. Are there any plans? I, I saw a statement to take it to other schools.
Yes, this has really just been a pilot program. As you know, I'm a big fan of testing things out and seeing how it was working. I do want to give a lot of credit to everybody involved. They've been great team players and, and Urban Hall's been very instrumental as well as our building tech. So, yes, what we are learning from this program, we're gonna, we're gonna take to other high schools and maybe beyond. It's just, it's an iterative process, one step at a time, so stay tuned.
Are there any, uh, thank you, are there any certifications that would be used to build on a resume of future job possibilities or a major in a college?
Yeah, um, not currently in, in this year, but that is something that we're working with Jesse White and Career and Technical Education to see how we can fold that in as we move forward.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Dr. Shiflett?
Our next report is about our Old Dominion University Leadership Cohort. Dr. John Cagiano will do the introduction.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. As you all are aware, during the summer of 2013, we began another leadership cohort with Old Dominion University. We have thirty, actually twenty-two, teachers participating in the program currently and they're just about at the midway point. So, we thought tonight would be an ideal time just to provide a status update on the program. Joining us tonight to do that is Dr. Karen Sanzo from Old Dominion University. She'll be providing the update. Uh, Dr. Sanzo is a veteran educator of sixteen years. Uh, her first eighteen, I'm sorry, her first eight years in the business, she was actually here with Hampton City Schools. She was a middle school math teacher at Sims Middle School and then an elementary assistant principal at Phillips Elementary. During the last eight years, Dr. Sanzo's been working for ODU and the Ed Leadership Program. She's currently an associate professor and the Program Coordinator for Educational Leadership in the Darden College of Education at ODU. Her research areas of interest include leadership preparation and development, school/university partnerships, and women leaders in education. Uh, Dr. Sanzo and her husband Jay reside here in Hampton and they have three boys who are students in Hampton City Schools. Uh, Dr. Sanzo.
Okay, great. Hi, good evening. Hello, Ms. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, members of the school board, Dr. Shiflett, and members of the audience. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and to talk to you for just a couple minutes about the leadership cohort that we have with Hampton City Schools. The aspiring leadership cohort is a true partnership between the Educational Leadership Program and the Darden College of Education at Old Dominion University and Hampton City Schools. We have come together to collaboratively prepare aspiring school leaders to meet the needs of Hampton City Schools. So, tonight, briefly, I'm going to talk about the program development, the cohort framework, and explore the benefits of the partnership. As we know, good school leaders can positively impact instructional processes, school climate, and perceptions of learning in the classroom. We also know that schools are complex and it's very important to have good leaders who are serving our schools and meeting the needs of the students. In the Commonwealth right now, there's a sense of urgency to be able to identify highly-qualified aspiring school leaders and school leaders who can step directly into the buildings and to meet the students' needs. So, Hampton City Schools and Old Dominion University have recognized the unique challenges that are involved in leadership preparation and have partnered to create a cohort that enables Hampton to grow their own leaders. While this is the third cohort that we've had with Hampton City Schools in the past decade, this is very different from the previous two cohorts. And as Dr. Cagiano mentioned, the cohort began last May, but the preparation actually began about eight to ten months prior to the start of the cohort where we talked about division leadership preparation needs and division priorities. We co-designed the courses and experiences and we also carefully recruited, carefully created a recruitment process to identify aspiring school leaders to participate in the program. This program is much more than a set of classes where students attend. It is a holistic, substantive, and very rigorous process to develop and support aspiring school leaders while collaboratively integrating best practices and the needs of the division. So, what we have here is just a, just a very basic framework of what the leadership pipeline is, where identified a set of aspiring school leaders. We have the core program, but we also have wraparound services from division allies who are principals and assistant principals serving as leadership coaches. We have ongoing contact with division and university partners and in turn create a pool of highly-qualified aspiring school leaders who can serve Hampton's leadership needs in a variety of ways. So, I am a higher education professor, so I always talk about research. I'll be very brief with this, but we did, we did approach this from a research standpoint as well as looking at best practices and we take a developmental view with this process. We recognize that the needs are dynamic and so we go back and forth changing classes as needed, making sure that we have those just-in-time, real-time adjustments for instruction. We strike the balance between the theoretical constructs in the classroom and the practice of the real world. We have worked very hard to develop and maintain an effective communication system between Old Dominion University and Hampton City Schools. And always, we have instructionally-focused leadership practices in mind throughout all of our coursework and work with the students. This is an expanded framework, just to help you understand the process that we've gone through and are continuing to go through from program recruitment to selection to coursework with embedded practicum and internship hours. I know that you've had the opportunity to meet some of the cohort members at previous school board meetings as well as at the school community, at the Community Priorities Workshop, I believe, back in October. We also provide additional support as the students graduate to help them as they transition into leadership positions. So, I'd like to talk to you briefly about the recruitment process. So, the recruitment process was very in-depth. We began with division-wide notifications, held, I believe, four large group meetings and had lots of individual conversations with students who were thinking about applying to the program. They then created, they then developed a comprehensive application packet, and you can go ahead to the fish next. And then they came onsite for a FishBowl interview. I believe we had seven or eight DLT members there along with Old Dominion faculty and the students processed through a leadership case and there were four or five in a group. And so, we observed them processing through this leadership case and then once they presented the case response to us, we then in turn asked them questions. So, it was a very different interview probably than what most of the applicants had gone through in the past. And so, here we have a picture of our cohort and this was taken at Langley Elementary School, I believe, last week with Katie Herman and Karen Leckenby. So, Katie, the principal, was working with the cohort along with Karen, who is the administrative secretary there, to help them process through real-life experiences they will go through as assistant principals, as content leaders, as principals, and we've done this three times. Dr. Haynes also worked with the cohort at Keketan and Mark Hudson worked with the cohort as well. And so, we're able to really integrate Hampton's needs into the cohort. And so, it's a six semester program and it's spread out through two years. The students meet on Tuesdays of every week on top of embedded practicum and internship hours. One of the beauties of the cohort is that we're able to integrate coursework differently than what you do in a traditional program. Dr. Leary and I taught the first semester and while I taught the Strategic Leadership and Management Course and Dr. Leary taught the Strategic Communication Course, we were able to integrate activities, assignments, really have substantive, meaningful activities in a way sometimes that you can't meet the specific division's needs. And it was actually, it was really exciting and I think if you talk to the students about how the program has progressed over the semesters, they've really had in-depth experiences, I think, in ways that they didn't even realize that they were going to have. One of the nice things also with this partnership is that we can have division leaders teach in the program along with faculty. The second semester, Dr. Cagiano and Dr. Cooper taught. This semester, Dr. Cagiano, myself, and Dr. Leary are teaching. Next semester, Dr. Haynes is going to be working with the students during their instructional supervision course and Dr. Ian Sutherland, who's an Old Dominion University faculty member, will be teaching them with the internship. The last two semesters in the fall, Dr. Mark Lenneberg, who's a superintendent in Bristol, but he's a nationally-known expert in school law, is going to be working with the cohort with school law. Dr. Scrivner will also, who's a faculty member at Old Dominion, will be working with them. And then in the final semester, they're going to kind of see all of us working with them in the internship and I'm really hoping that I can invite some of you all in to work with the cohort as well. You're always welcome anytime, but just know now that I've been here, you're going to be seeing my emails requesting you to come into the class. One of the things we did the first semester was we asked them to come up with their cohort vision, to talk about their identity. Dr. Leary was instrumental in helping the cohort process through this visioning component and at the end of the semester, they came up with this image that represents who they are in the cohort. And so, what we'd like to do now is just show you some of the pictures and I think we have seven or eight of those. And these are students who were in Dr. Cooper's class in December presenting their program evaluation projects and I'm, I'm sure she would be able to share some of those projects with you if you were interested in that. And so, they, they had a very in-depth experience in program evaluation. I think we have a picture of Dr. Cooper coming up as well. Then, there were a couple, I think there were a couple more up there too, but maybe those didn't come through? Is there one, is there another slide?
We seem to be stuck on that one.
Oh, are we stuck on that one? Well, I had a picture up there of the cohort celebrating with food because we, oh, there we go, because we want to celebrate with food. And then just a couple more things. One of the components that we also are excited about, and Eric Stone has been working with this, is the administrative ally component where we have principals and assistant principals who are being trained as coaches and every month, they meet with their promising principal, who's a cohort member, to help them process through their experiences in the cohort and add another layer of support for the students. There are, of course, added benefits to this cohort model and just a few are the real-world just-in-time problem explorations, the guest speakers that we're able to bring in into Hampton City Schools, into the classroom, and a number of other benefits. I would be glad to answer questions now that you might have about the cohort or to meet with you and talk to you about this more in-depth and of course, welcome you into our cohort classroom. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sanzo. Questions from board members, comments? Mr. Kilgore?
Uh, just real quick, when is the cohort, is it finishing in May of 2015?
Yes, the cohort will finish in May 2015 and they'll graduate with their master's or educational leadership degree and they'll have their licensure in PK-12 license in, in the state for school leadership.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Pearson.
School leadership is very important to me. When these students receive their master's degree, what role do you and your colleagues play in recommending a person for a particular position?
Yeah, that's a great question and one of the things that we have tried to do is to get to know the individuals and they create a leadership profile as they're going through the cohort and the recommendation is very individually-based. One of the things that we do pride ourselves on is having frank conversations about where they are at this point in time, what they might need in terms of additional development if we feel that this is the great, the, the best placement for them. We've had the good fortune of a number of our cohort members to transition into leadership positions already while they're in the cohort. Um, we, we have cohort members who are at the elementary, middle, high school levels in varying positions, but we've already experienced that. So, we had one person who's now placed at the central office. I think within a week, I was out there talking to her. I had processed through that opportunity beforehand and so, we, we talk with them. I will talk with the principal if they want, but I would say at the end of this program, we would feel very confident in any of these individuals stepping out and immediately being able to serve the schools. They have been incredibly impressive over the past three semesters.
And Mr. Pearson, I would also add, you know, when I think back to my experience, it wasn't very differentiated. I think the relationships our students are developing with instructors, both ODU and division leadership as well as building principals, they feel comfortable coming to us and approaching us one-on-one and, you know, some things, some of them are saying, you know, "I would really like an opportunity to hone my interviewing skills." So, then we get together and say, you know, "I think everyone in the, in the cohort could possibly benefit from that, so why don't we build that into the program?" So, very, very fluid process.
And one of the things now is we've offered them an opportunity for a midpoint check-in and so, a number of them are taking us up on that offer where Dr. Cagiano and I will sit down and talk with them or we'll talk with them virtually via Adobe Connect and talk about where they are developmentally, the areas that we see that they might need to develop because the internship is coming up. And their internship isn't just going to be in the summer, the internship is going to be for the next three semesters and that can help them develop their skills as well there.
Other, any other comments or questions, Ms. Henry?
So, what kind of administrative assistant, administrative intern certain used to do, okay, I'm going to be the assistant principal for summer school or I'm going to do, what kinds of experiences are you having for these people?
Well, we do have some who are going to be summer school principals, but we also have a number who have suddenly developed a love for program evaluation and I believe that they are going to be working with Dr. Cooper and they have been working with Dr. Cooper. So, that is a pleasant surprise for this, the Community Priorities Workshop, so being able to train them to interact with the communities, those are some of the experiences they've been able to have. One of the great experiences we had with Dr. Leary and I in the summers, we were able to take the students out to Lincoln Park and to engage with the community in that way. So, we're not just doing classroom-based, but then getting them out into the fields. Right now, we're actually engaged in the process of placing the students for their internship experiences and so, while maybe three or four might have summer school assistant principal experiences, they, they probably will be doing a number of other things as well.
So, they could be assisting any, in any kind of role from the central office to a school?
Well, they have to. The Commonwealth requires the students to have placement experiences at the elementary, middle, at the elementary, middle, high school, central office, and external agency. Because the license is PK-12, they have to get all of those experiences and while the minimum is 320, I would say these students are probably getting in excess of a thousand internship hours just from the varied experiences they have over the two years.
That's great. I'm sure the, the principals and all the other folks are enjoying having bright assistants.
Yeah, and, and they, they are very eager, willing to step up, to do anything that they are asked of and like I said, they, they have been a tremendous group so far. They've really been impressive. It's, it's been very nice to work with them.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Sanzo.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
I do want to thank Dr. Sanzo. Um, you know, I knew this was going to be something very special and very different from the moment that they started the recruitment efforts and through the selection efforts. Uh, I want to thank you for working with our team to develop a, I, what I believe is a model program. Uh, I've been so impressed with the, the individuals in the cohort group and I feel confident that we're going to have some extremely capable leaders coming out of it. So, thank you for your work.
Great, thank you very much.
Dr. Shiflett?
Our next report is an update on the General Assembly and of course, its impact on our budget. Ms. Scott?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, we have a little bit of information from the General Assembly. Actually, if you could operate it too, since I realize I do not have a clicker. We have a little bit of information from the General Assembly. As you know, we do not have a budget yet. Um, when they met again in special session, they, they each came up with a budget that they proposed, but we do not have an actual final budget. But, we did get some information from the Department of Education that told us what the impact would be by division based on DOE's enrollment projection for us. So, we could not play with that enrollment projection, but it wasn't, you know, far enough off that I feel like these numbers are too misrepresented. The one thing that I'll point out first that is not coming from the General Assembly but is coming from the Virginia Retirement System is a change in the rate for group life insurance. It's going up from 1.24% to 1.32%. So, we do need to change that in our budget. The total cost is approximately $83,000 and we will take that from our contingency funds and it gets moved to every category in line And it gets moved to every category in line item 2400, which is group life. Now, going into the bills, House Bill 5002, which gave us information for both FY '15 and FY '16. So actually, what I'm going to do is walk you through the House bill for each year, and then the governor/senate's bill for each year. So if it looks like I'm jumping back and forth between years, it's the two different bills. So House Bill 5002 for FY '15, the proposed amendments under that are a revision to the K3 class size reduction funding. They currently use a one-year average on the free lunch eligibility. They're proposing to change it to a three-year average, which is what they do for the SOQ-funded prevention, intervention, and remediation. So there is already a program that's done that way. For us, that would mean a loss in funding, state funding of approximately $380,000 in FY '15. They also, actually, both groups are proposing an update to the sales tax forecast. They've just looked at the revenue forecast and have updated it based on more current information. So we would gain just under $24,000 from that. So the net effect from just those two items for FY '15 would be a loss of almost $356,000 in funding next year. All right, so then if we look at the same bill for FY '16, we again see the K3 primary class size reduction. It's a loss in that year of 371,000, so a little bit different amount. Again, the updated sales tax forecast, which gives us just under 27,000. And the big change here is that they propose funding a 1% salary increase for all SOQ-funded instructional and support positions. Couple of things about that, well, first of all, it's 775,000 that they would provide in state funding. But what's important to note here is that these are being provided as incentive funds, which means we choose to opt into the funding or not. And we would have to put up approximately an additional $500,000 to fund, over and above the 775, in order to fund that 1% for all of our full-time employees. Okay, I was like, wait. Okay, so going into the, and one other point on the incentive funds, we do have to certify in that case that we are using the funds to provide the raise. We have to certify to the state that we are using the funds to provide the raises in order to get them. All right, the House bill/senate bill 5003, which is really Governor McAuliffe's amendments to Governor McDonnell's introduced budget. And his proposed amendments include, and we have talked about this before, what we were calling Amendment Six, which was a 50% hold harmless for divisions who had less direct aid state funding in FY '15 than they did in FY '14. And it would provide a 50% hold harmless for those divisions that were impacted. For us, this amounts to about $1,243,000. But what's really important here is that it is a one-time hold harmless. The money would only be provided in FY '15. It is not provided again in FY '16. So while sometimes a hold harmless is provided for two years, as in the next item, this is just a one-year item. And would, you know, the best use of it would be one-time purchases or expenditures. The governor is also proposing another hold harmless for our Virginia preschool initiative for divisions that lost slots that were used in fiscal year '14. In '14, we were funded for 617 slots. In '15, we're funded for 610 slots. So the hold harmless being provided there is just under $30,000. And again, the updated sales tax forecast would give us about 21,000. So the total change there is just under 1.3 million. But again, most of that is coming from the hold harmless, the 50% hold harmless that is one-time funding. All right, the governor is also proposing a salary increase. In this case, his proposal is for a 2% salary increase. And instead of being effective July 1 of '15, he's backing it up to April 1 of 2015, which means it's being provided in the last quarter of FY '15, as well as FY '16. The cost, the state funding that would be provided for that last quarter would be $400,000. Again, it's incentive funds. We choose whether to opt into the funding and provide the raise. And the additional funding that we would have to add to the 400,000 to do it is approximately 250,000, again, to provide that 2% for all full-time employees. Looking at FY '16, again, you see the same thing with the VPI hold harmless. The reason it's so much more is that the funded slots in FY '16 dropped from the 610 to 595. So now we've gone from 617 in the current year to 595. So we're getting the hold harmless for 22 slots, which is $94,000. The updated sales tax forecast is 24,000. And for the full-year funding for the 2% salary increase, it's $1,564. But again, it's incentive funding. We choose whether to participate. And if we do choose to participate, it would cost us an additional $1 million over and above the $1,564 to provide the raise to all full-time employees. What's the impact of all of this? Well, it's a good question. At this point, we really don't know. They are still ironing out the budget. As we've all heard, the primary battle is over the Medicaid expansion. We really don't know how long it's going to be until we have a final budget. It could be weeks, it could be months. In the meantime, we could end up with either-or, a combination of, or none of the above. It's a little bit hard to tell. So at this point, we're really not recommending, other than the VRS, which, again, is the group life, is not coming from the General Assembly. That's coming from VRS. So we are recommending incorporating that change, but we really aren't recommending doing anything with the rest of these until we get a final budget, because it's just, it's so up in the air right now that we wouldn't, we wouldn't know what to count on. Questions on that part?
All right, questions from board members? Mr. Kilgore?
No. I think I'm good.
And I was going to say, I do have, I do have a couple of updates to the Fund 50 budget before we move on, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions on this particular presentation first.
Okay, yeah, let's handle this piece first. Any questions over here? And anyone down here with questions for, okay. All right, so move on.
Okay. So before we, before you move into the discussion of the approval of the budget, I just wanted to give you a couple of updates on the things in the budget. What is posted online and what you have on board docs is what was presented on March the 12th. We have discussed, last week, we discussed an addition to the contingency based on some additional savings identified from the HVAC of $60,000. So we said we would be adding $60,000 to the contingency. This week, the $83,000 to fund the group life, that would be coming out of the contingency. So based on what you see posted in the presentation that was given on the 12th, the changes would be a net reduction to the contingency of $23,000. And those changes are coming out of, the $60,000 is coming out of 4-6007, which is maintenance supplies. And the additions for the group life are going in every category in line item 2400, which is the VRS group life subsidy. The bottom line of the budget does not change. The grand total of the Fund 50 budget is the same. This is just movement between line items in the budget, so it does not change the grand total. And then also, on the Fund 51 budget, when it was presented, and you should each have a handout in front of you, when the Fund 51 budget was presented, we gave you three different scenarios, a no-price increase, a five-cent price increase, and a ten-cent price increase. At the time, Dr. Bryant did not have the template. There's a superintendent's memo that comes out in April every year that has a calculation tool in it that tells us how much lunch prices need to be increased in order to be in compliance with gradually bringing our lunch prices up to the federal reimbursement. She got that calculation tool Friday evening, I believe, and she's done the calculation, and we need to increase our price by five cents. So the Fund 51 budget that we are asking you to approve is the one that shows the five-cent increase, which is listed up in the upper left-hand corner. And I have provided a copy there. It's the same one that was in the March 5 presentation. It's just, we gave you three scenarios. That was the middle one, the five cents. So just so there's clarification on which budget you're voting on for Fund 51, it's that one with the five-cent price increase. I think that's, I think that's it on updates. Are there any questions?
Questions from board members on 51? Mr. Harper?
Ms. Scott?
Yes?
I know the city council has a contingency fund. What exactly is that?
City council has?
No, our, any contingency fund.
Oh, in our case, the contingency fund is a personnel contingency fund for us to hire additional teachers in the fall, when classes come together in September. And because we get that K3 class size funding, we have to be very careful about the teacher-student ratio. So we have that funding available for us to cover the hiring of additional teachers if needed. And we have traditionally used it.
And that's for teachers only? That contingency fund?
It's been teachers and instructional assistants in the past.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions on Fund 51? Okay.
All right. And any changes, the 60,000 and the 83,000 that I mentioned will be incorporated into the budget after tonight, along with any other changes that are recommended. Okay. All right, might as well stay.
Hey, our last report for the evening is our business operations, our monthly update. Ms. Scott?
Okay, good evening again.
Hello.
All right, we are here to present the results of operations as of February the 28th, 2014. And I am looking at a student fee schedule that is not going to give me any numbers. The results of operations as of the end of February, we had $117,898,710 in total revenue. And expenditures and encumbrances to date at that point were $118,748,881. Of that figure, $1,755,48 is encumbrances, which means they're obligations that have been encumbered against our money but not yet paid, because we haven't received the goods or services yet. At this point in the year, and as we have been telling you since the Fall Membership Report was finalized, our Fall Membership showed an enrollment of 20,347 students. When we project that to the March ADM, we project the final number being about 20,113, or 37 students short of what we budgeted, which was 20,150. This has a fairly minimal impact on our budget overall, about $153,000, which we expect to be able to take out of attrition. Any questions?
Any questions on business operations? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Dr. Shiflett?
That concludes our report. Oh, I do have one thing I want to say. And I wish I'd said it during the presentation of our cohort group. But I received an email from an individual, oh, I don't remember the exact date, but asking if they could come and shadow me for a day. And I've had, we had just a delightful visit, and I'd like to introduce her. She's actually here this evening to visit with us. Her name is Adrian Pendleton. She's from St. Paul, Minnesota. And she has a daughter that's currently a student at HU. And she's had an opportunity to learn a little more about Hampton City Schools, and in the process, we've learned that there are a lot of similarities between what's going on in Minnesota and Virginia. And I want to thank you for being here tonight and hope you've gained some additional experience about how things are done in Virginia. I think the thing that most astounded her is that our school boards don't have tax levying authority. And it's quite different where she's from.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. We will move on then from superintendent and staff reports to our other items for action. And we have six items on our action agenda tonight, five of which are policy revisions. We will begin tonight with the approval of the proposed FY 2014-15 operating budget and budgets for Fund 51, 60, 65, and 94. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the proposed budgets, as we've all had them presented to us, for 2014-15 for Fund 51, 60, 65, and 94.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the FY 2014-15 operating budget and budgets for Funds 51, 60, 65, and 94. Is there any discussion? We'll start to my left with Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. I'm probably going to say a lot of what a lot of you are thinking and are probably going to repeat. There's really no other way to say this. I don't like this budget and the cuts that we're having to make. We're experiencing yet another year of increased pressures, yet decreased funding from the state. Since the beginning of the economic downturn, the boards worked hard to take cuts that are farthest from impacting the classroom. However, after experiencing that year after year, we're now at a point that we have to admit that this proposed budget is impacting our classrooms and our kids, and significantly impacting dedicated personnel. As a board, though, we're obligated to adopt a balanced budget. So we looked at many options for cutting expenses, prioritized to come up with those that are before us now. So these are the options that had the least impact, but yes, they are impacting. And I'm really hoping that these numbers can still change, and we can later restore some of these by presenting with city council, or maybe some of the changes that Ms. Scott was presenting. Hopefully, it doesn't get worse. A speaker at one of our budget hearings shared with us and commented that the continual decrease in funding is unsustainable. And I completely agree with her. In a budget presentation, Dr. Shiflett shared some numbers with us, and I'd just like to highlight those again. She said the state of Virginia ranks 38th in the nation for per pupil funding for pre-K through 12th grade, yet 13th in the nation for corrections expenditures per offender. We need to figure out how to get the state funding trend reversed, or develop other sources of revenue to support our schools, with the education that our kids need, as well as the compensation that our staff deserves. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other comments from board members? Mrs. Henry?
Madam Chairman, as we've all said repeatedly, this is not a happy day for this board. We can remember times when we could recommend programs and express our preferences about how to prioritize expenditures, and do so with a clear understanding of what revenues we could expect. Once again, we're caught in a situation of waiting for agreement from four different budgets, from the state, the former governors, the new governors, the House version and the Senate version. Moreover, we have experienced $21 million decline in revenue since 2009. That amount is $1,000 per pupil. I have trouble visualizing millions. $1,000 per pupil, I can understand. That's real. This budget continues to protect the major programs for students, with the sad exceptions of participation that we're doing now with gifted art and pre-IB. The cuts to personnel and reorganization of staff are very painful. I don't want to see some teacher assistants lose their jobs. I don't want to see others face both a loss of salary and of benefits to their families. I hate that the whole custodial staff and HVAC will be I hate that the whole custodial staff and HVAC will be cut loose from direct control of Hampton City Schools and from Hampton City Schools' benefits. I don't have $7 million. We have to approve a balanced budget. I'd like to say that I'm optimistic that increased revenue will appear from the state. I'd like to think that the city would endorse level funding for this year's budget. We will surely try to mitigate some of these situations that we find if we have definite revenue figures. But I'd hate to give false hope to those who are affected currently by the cuts. It will certainly be with a heavy heart that I vote for this budget.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Any other board members wish to comment? I'll make some closing remarks before we call for the vote. While the process is continual and ongoing throughout the year, serious budget planning began in November of 2013. The school board has held three budget retreats in addition to individual board member meetings with division leadership and members of our City Council. We have engaged in five budget hearings and received public comment and written communications from members of the community. In addition, the superintendent assisted the city manager in presenting budget details to the public in a series of budget forums throughout the community during the months of February and March. Tonight's vote is the culmination of all of those efforts, along with hours of calculations, study, and preparation by our finance and division leadership teams. To complicate our work this year, the division expects to sustain a reduction in state funding of nearly $600,000. While we make gains in some areas across our state funding, it is not enough to offset the loss. Hampton real estate values have continued to decline, creating expected local funding losses of $750,000. All the while, our cost pressures have increased dramatically. Most significant are the Virginia retirement and Hampton employees' retirement systems, along with rising costs for health care. These three categories alone represent almost $6 million. The school division is a funding-dependent entity, and like all school boards across Virginia, funding is derived from a combination of federal, state, and local resources. School boards in Virginia do not have taxing authority. Dr. Shiflett was correct in sharing that information with you. And by law, funds are allocated on a yearly basis and spent on a yearly basis, with no allowance for saving or rolling over funds into the next year. Hampton School Division operates in a fiscally conservative and responsible manner, and has spent the last six years identifying efficiencies and trimming its spending. In doing so, it has closed six schools, eliminated and reduced services, eliminated spouses from health insurance coverage, reduced transportation, limited funding from necessary replacement schedules for buses and technology, restructured departments and deferred capital projects and maintenance. Our community and our City Council rallied behind schools last year, and the council bravely approved a 20-cent rate increase to the real estate tax rate. Such a move is not expected in this budget cycle. Eighty-four percent of our school budget is derived and dedicated to employee salaries and benefits, leaving little else to modify or adjust. Following six straight years of budget funding reductions and increasing retirement and health costs, our ability to trim in areas outside of the classroom and staff has met with the end of its road. Our work is not complete on this budget as we await the final outcome of the state budget and our local City Council's budget. We fully expect to return and make some adjustments to this budget after they have completed their work. It is projected that it could be as late as June before it is finalized in Richmond. We do thank all of the employees and the staff and the members of our community for their public comment and emails and information you have supplied us to consider as we make our deliberations. Your valuable input has not fallen on deaf ears. As we go back in to make adjustments, we will continue to consider all of your concerns. I would also like to thank the superintendent and her division leadership team and our finance team, under which, they are under, the finance team under the direction of Mrs. Scott, who has led the budget charge this year. We thank you all so much for your commitment to this budget. The final superintendent's budget proposal on which we vote tonight reflects adjustments to vital staff and critically important functions and programs. We have struggled to reach common ground with this budget. Our emphasis has remained focused on our mission and goals and making, woo, sorry, every possible effort to preserve that which takes place in the classroom. While adjustments in this budget are business decisions. This board is made up of elected members who are human beings. And we are conflicted, heartsick, empathetic, and sensitive to the effect this budget has and will have on so many lives. In the end, it is our responsibility to approve a budget that is balanced. Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Excuse me, Ms. Bowers. I have a statement to read before I vote. As a member of the school board of the City of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the superintendent's proposed FY 2014-2015 school operating budget because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe I am able to participate in the vote on this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. My vote is aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
I have to read similar statement, same statement, not similar, same. As a member of the school board of the City of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the superintendent's proposed 2014-2015 school operating budget because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the vote on this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I'd like to further state that because of good conscience, I don't feel that I can support any plan that has the negative effect on our employees and our children. So, I vote no.
Ms. Mugler?
Motion carries. We move on to item 7.02, Revision of School Board Policy IKF, Standards of Learning Tests and Graduation Requirements. We have four additional revisions. Is there a motion to approve in block form, or do we want to take them individually?
Madam Chair, I move that we consider these items together, so that, I move that we approve item 7.02, 7.03, 7.04, 7.05, and 7.06.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve items 7.02 through 7.06, which consists of the Revision of School Board Policy IKF, Standards of Learning Tests and Graduation Retirements, requirements; the Revision of School Board Policy AE, School Division Goals and Objectives; Revision of School Board Policy AF, Comprehensive Plan; Revision of School Board Policy BBA, School Board Powers and Duties; and the final item is 7.06, which is the Revision of School Board Policy BDD, Electronic Participation at Meetings from Remote Locations. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on to deliberation. We have one item for deliberation tonight, and that is our proposed approved student fees for 2014-15. Ms. Scott, you're up.
All right. This is my last thing. You should have a copy of the proposed fees for FY 15. Anything that is in blue is a proposed change from the last time you approved it, which I believe was in January. These are changes that would be effective in September with the new school year. I do have one additional revision. Since this is deliberation, we will revise it and send it back to you. But one additional change, the behind-the-wheel for both resident and non-resident summer needs to increase to 150 for the resident and 170 for the non-resident based on the criteria that we are required to follow. There will probably be a change to regular behind-the-wheel, but we do not get that information until in the summer. We complete a report for regular behind-the-wheel in June, and so we won't know that information until later. We will have to bring that one back for a subsequent revision because we just don't know at this point what it is. So, there is no change to regular behind-the-wheel at this point, just summer. Otherwise, everything else is in the blue, as you see. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Henry, question?
I think I know the answer, but I always like to be sure. And that is that the senior class dues include graduation costs?
Yes. It's down, it's down at the, it's down at the bottom. Class socials, t-shirts, prizes, caps and gowns, class gifts, and other similar items.
Okay.
Other questions for Ms. Scott on the fee schedule? Okay. We'll take this up in action at our next meeting.
Thank you.
We move now to deliberation first read. We have six policies to be briefed on for first read, and we'll start with the Revision of School Board Policy IL, Testing Programs. Dr. Woods?
No.
No, it will be Dr. Cooper.
Sorry about the delay.
No.
The revisions in this policy, the VSBA sent us a policy, and basically, it still contained language that was significantly out of date, specifically stating that we would not ask young people to code their sheets, including the race category. And we don't have young people filling in bubbles to describe their demographics, nor do we have, all of that is preloaded with online testing, and so young people are never asked to do those things. That's the first substantive change. The second major change is that we have asked that all standardized testing, we added some language to say that all standardized testing beyond that that is required by federal, state, and local statute be proposed to the superintendent and approved at this level. We do have vendors that will approach our school principals and offer, ask them to do additional testing to pilot and field test different measures that they have, and we don't want our administrative staff put in an awkward situation. So, we ask that all proposals for additional testing come up here for approval, and those are really the two large changes in that policy.
Mrs. Henry?
Dr. Cooper, would that include stuff that comes with, like, the NAEP test or whatever, or that just, some of those come with a grant or a program you're in, and here's your test that you have to do?
The tests that are required by grants still come before us.
Yeah, they go, because that's gone through the superintendent.
They already go through the process.
Sure.
But there are others that are vendor-sponsored when they're piloting different versions of a test, and they usually come with money attached, and it's a very difficult decision in these hard budget times.
Any other questions for Dr. Cooper on this testing policy?
All right.
Okay. We'll move on then to Policy IKEB, which is Policy on Acceleration. Dr. Johnson?
This policy was reviewed for its ongoing applicability. It's within the five-year window, and it's aligned with the VSBA Policy IKEB. We did delete a redundant cross-reference, legal citation, and added a cross-reference. And this is just an updating of that current policy.
Any questions for Dr. Johnson on IKEB, Acceleration Policy? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We move next to Policy JHC, which is our Policy on Student Health Services and Requirements. Ms. Lawrence?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, board, Dr. Shiflett. I hope this is a simple thing. I was brought to my attention by a PTA member, had asked me to relook at our fever policy and to see if that could be changed due to, they felt that the 100, it used to be, well, it is 100 degrees Fahrenheit was kind of on the low side. So, I had a group of nurses examine the policy and still came back with kind of wanting to lean towards the 100. So, then I took it to a school health advisory board. I have on that school health advisory board a physician, as well as the epidemiologist for the health department. And after we looked over the literature and looked at what the National Association of School Nurses recommends, the 100.4, as well as the Academy of Pediatrics, some of the things we read there, we have, we're proposing to up that to 100.4 as, and it seems like it's a small increase, but actually, it is very beneficial because you've crossed that line. You know now, it is definitely moving toward, you know, going up your fever. So, that is why we're making that recommendation, to change that. And so, it's just a simple language change that we want to make in the policy, as well as there was, I think, a cross-reference that we found that got missed that got changed also. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Questions for Ms. Lawrence regarding this policy revision? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You had to wait a long time to tell us that little bit. We move on to Policy GBBC, which is electronic mail, email. Ms. Ruth?
Yes, good evening. Normally, you would see Mr. Eagle up here talking about all policies related to information technology. But since I stepped into his kitchen and requested some changes to this particular policy, I told him I would go ahead and carry them through the approval process. The changes to GBBC are related to two policies that were approved actually at the last board meeting. GBACC, our new Maintaining Professional Staff-Student Boundaries Policy, and also GBAC, our Updated Standards of Conduct Policy. And then we specifically added language about the use of email to communicate with students should strictly be on a class-related or co-curricular, sports-related subject, nothing of a personal nature. And also, that you should not be using email to communicate with coworkers in a manner that would violate our standards of conduct. We have also added some specific references to the fact that pornography is not permitted through email, and also some cross-reference changes.
Any questions for Ms. Ruth on GBBC? And then for GBD?
Yes. Again, this policy is actually our one policy, or one of our few policies. It has to be updated every two years, as opposed to every five years. So, we are coming up on the normal cycle to review the policy. The only changes that are recommended are The only changes that are recommended are an update to the cross-references. The rest of the policy has been reviewed, and actually, I see them at the bottom, but I don't see them, they're not in blue, but we are adding GBAC and GBACC to the policy. So we'll get them colored correctly next week, but those are the only changes to the policy. But it is, it does need an updated review date. And that's it.
Any questions for Ms. Ruth on this policy revision? Okay. Thank you very much. And we come to our final policy for deliberation first read. It's policy JF. It's Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Code of Student Conduct. Ms. McKeithen?
Before I turn the microphone over to Ms. McKeithen, I would like to make a request of the board. The Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook has undergone minimal revision, and it is my request that, with the board's approval, that we would be able, after you see what Ms. McKeithen has done to the handbook, move this forward to the action agenda for the next board meeting, so that we can take advantage of favorable pricing when we get our new agendas printed.
I'm before you this evening, seeking your approval for our revision to policy JF, which is our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. While the policy itself doesn't require any changes, because it's relating to the handbook, there are a few additions that we are seeking your approval for this evening. So I'd like to invite your attention to the first request, which is policy JGB, the Student Bullying Policy.
Dr. Johnson? If I could pull that up on the screen for me?
Okay. This policy was adopted on March 19, and excerpts from the exact policy have been included in the handbook. So we're simply seeking your approval for this policy that was very recently adopted by this board. The next recommendation is policy JHC, which was just before you tonight for first read, which is the Student Health Services Policy that Linda Lawrence referenced with the fever change. And then the final recommendation this evening is the adoption of our testing guide, which is not actually a policy, but a guide that is an addendum that appears in the back of the handbook. This guide has not been updated for several years, so there are a few changes that now reflect some of the most current assessments, as well as some new guidelines. And so those are the three very simple changes that we're requesting for the handbook this year.
Are there questions for Ms. McKeithen regarding these proposals? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I was wondering, did you have a... I know every year, they usually have a committee of certain stakeholders. How was the review of the handbook done this year?
This year, because it was brought to my attention that sometimes, and I remember at one of the previous board meetings, you indicated that sometimes we put the cart before the horse. So this year, we were going to make sure that the policies and the handbook align properly, and we will reconvene the committee next year when there are more changes that may be requested.
Okay, so this is strictly an aligning policies?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. McKeithen? Ms. Henry?
The cell phone policy is up to date in here?
Yes.
Okay, because it's too much to go through at first, but...
Okay.
Okay. Anything further from board members for Ms. McKeithen regarding these proposed changes? Now, you referred to policy JHC, which is currently on our first read. Would we need to move that particular policy forward as well?
Yes.
In order to take care of that?
Yes.
Any other questions from board members?
Madam Chairman, do you need a motion to do that? To put those two items on action rather than deliberation for next year?
Would probably formalize that.
Wouldn't hurt.
So, yeah, would not hurt for a motion.
Could we have it on deliberation next meeting, and then move it to action that same meeting, so that you have the opportunity to deliberate? Or, I guess either way, you could do it.
Yeah, I mean, we can deliberate it.
We can do it that way, yeah, all right.
Action, but she's saying, just move it forward to deliberation, and then at our next meeting, move it from deliberation to action.
Same effect.
Same effect, so that would be simpler, so...
If we move it to the...
So it'll move forward to deliberation, but with the assumption that we'll move it forward to action.
Same meeting?
In the same meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The next meeting, well, that concludes all of our deliberation policy, deliberation first read. So we'll move on to informational items. Our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 23, at 6:30 p.m. at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street. Dr. Shiflett, do you have any other informational items?
I do. Cary Elementary School is having its long-awaited grand opening of its now-covered breezeway tomorrow at 1 p.m., and I do want to wish everyone a very restful and relaxing spring break.
Are there any other informational items from board members for tonight? There being none, this meeting is adjourned.